The board meeting to order at 6:03 PM. I will announce that the board plans to go into executive session at the end of open session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. For the purpose that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, the board will not reconvene in open session afterward. So just for the record.
And being recorded.
We are being recorded. Sarah, would you like to record attendance?
I will.
Thank you.
Okay, here we go. All right. Bella Gorman, Darren Rose, Dwayne Stanley, Evan Kuzbowski, Greg Theos, James Carter, Laura Webster, and Stefan Victor.
Yeah.
Excellent. Thank you, Sarah. And did I hear that there's no public comment? Is that correct? Excellent. So we will move on to the consent agenda. Bella, construction budget tracking, anything new and exciting there?
Um, no, actually, I don't think the schedules changed since January 31st. So we expect that schedule to change. Now that the project is finishing in the next month, the next schedule.
Okay, great. Are there any questions?
Bella, you said it will change next month or it will not?
Yeah, I would expect, I mean, I signed some checks, so I think it will change.
Great. All right, we're going to move on to the votes. We have a number of minutes here tonight. So the first one is the Board of Trustees Meeting Minutes from our February 27th meeting. Any comments, notes, changes?
Yeah, I would, I would like to just, on page four, I think of the minutes, we are re-talking about the retaining wall project. And if you recall, that was the first time that the Finance Committee had heard about the, the final quote. It's on the top of page four, there's a paragraph starting with Dwayne offered to review the contract, and the last sentence of that paragraph says, "The Finance Committee recommends the board approve and make the decision now." I, I'd like to like remove that sentence because we really didn't vote yet. We voted the following week. So if we could.
Strike that.
I will correct that. Okay, so you can approve with corrections.
Okay.
Excellent. Any other questions, comments, changes? Is there a motion?
I'll second.
Darren and Stefan?
Yes.
Okay, I will record votes. Bella?
Yes.
Darren?
Yes.
Dwayne?
Yes.
Evan?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
And Stefan?
Yes.
Great, thank you. The next set of minutes are the minutes from Strategic Planning Session One, which was on Saturday, March 1st, 2025. Any questions, comments, changes? Seeing none, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is that Darren?
Dwayne.
Dwayne, okay, please say your name. That would help me if I can't look at both.
Second, I'll second. This is Greg.
Greg, thank you. Appreciate that. Bella?
Yes.
Darren?
Yes.
Dwayne?
Yes.
Evan?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
And Stefan?
Yes.
Great. Next is approving the minutes from the second Strategic Planning Session from March 8th, 2025. Any questions, comments, changes?
I just have a quick change for that one. On, on page three, under this section where I introduce myself, it says, "I have a commercial and interior, I do commercial interior design." It's actually my wife that does commercial and interior design, not me. I would love to give her credit for that because.
I actually heard that. I'm sorry I wrote that. Apologize, but it's a cool thing.
We don't want Dwayne getting in trouble.
No, I don't want to get in trouble.
Sorry, sorry, sorry.
Well, while we're, you know, correcting, I am, I haven't been a part-time employee of Raytheon in thirty years or so.
Did I say Mason?
It says he is a part-time employee of Raytheon.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's right.
Okay, I will make the corrections.
That's what you get when you talk about.
If, if you're going to strike Raytheon, you should probably strike the Nevada test site part two, since that was tied to the Raytheon experience.
Take Raytheon and what, what was the other one now?
The sentence immediately following that about Nevada, those, those two were related and it's, you know, a million years ago.
Take out, got it. Okay.
With those corrections, I'll move approval of the minutes from the 8th of March as amended.
Second by Dwayne.
Okay. Sorry, guys.
Second by Dwayne.
Yeah. Bella?
Yes.
Darren?
Yes.
Dwayne?
Yes.
Evan?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
And Stefan?
Yes.
Everyone unanimous?
And the next vote we have is approval of the graduation requirement policy and non-discrimination harassment policy updates. I'm going to give that to you, Lisa.
Yeah, quickly, we're just looking for a vote from the full board. The graduation requirement, both have been approved by governance and graduation also went through the Ed Committee. So I'll take any questions. If not, feel free to move it to a vote.
Are we doing both votes at the same time?
Up to the board.
Well, if you're moving it open, I'll move approval of the two policy documents as presented. Darren?
Stefan seconds.
Okay, so that's Darren and Stefan.
Any questions, discussion? Excellent. I guess we're ready for the vote.
Okay. Bella?
Yes.
Darren?
Yes.
Dwayne?
Yes.
Evan?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
And Stefan?
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you. And the last vote for the evening, I'm going to make a motion to appoint Darren Rose to the Stem Soaring Eagles Foundation. Where there's so many moving pieces, especially with governance, continuity, I think, is really important between the two bodies. We have a lot that we're working on in conjunction. And I would love to have Darren's presence there and also as, as another go-between between the two committees. So I will make that nomination. And ask for a second and then. Okay, great. Any questions, comments, discussion?
Well, I guess the comment I was going to make is I felt that we always had someone that was on the board, also on the AMSA, the Soaring Eagles Board. I mean, I felt like that was always.
Typically, they're.
Something we tried to do.
We tried to do, yes. Yeah. I think having multiples, for a while, it was development was sitting on both, and then the chair kind of floats back and forth. But I think having an additional person consistency is, is key. Awesome, Stefan?
Is that the official, I mean, I am attending some of these meetings and I know we talked about having explicitly a board representative there. Darren, are you filling that role now or is it just like, because they need a couple more people? But they do.
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry, go ahead, Laura.
No, I was going to say, in my, my, my thought was that as a board representative to sit on the committee, unless Darren, you have a different, if you would like to be there separate from the board and, and wear two different hats.
No, I think it makes sense for me to be the board rep.
Multiple personalities in my mind than I need.
I mean, I'm going to write a check too, so, you know.
We appreciate that. All right, great. So Sarah, we'll take a vote.
Bella?
Yes.
Darren?
I'll abstain.
Abstain. Okay, Dwayne?
Yes.
Evan?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
And Stefan?
Yes.
Thank you, Darren, for taking on yet another.
I'm happy to do that. Probably should have left the room to let you vote, but this. I'm looking forward to it.
Excellent. Thank you very much. We appreciate it. All right, updates. Marcy, fundraising.
Hi. Sorry, I'm sitting in my car. I apologize. So just a couple of quick things. We are still working on our business partners outreach. We have fourteen members now totaling seventeen thousand five hundred dollars in. We have a couple, we're actually meeting with Meredith Harris next week to talk to her about a couple of prospects that we have, get some insight from her. And we are planning, loosely planning a breakfast to celebrate this group where we invite all of the business partners to come to AMSA, potentially tour the new building if they weren't able to come to the ribbon cutting, but just mix and mingle. We will include the board when we pick a date for that. We're thinking of May, but we don't have a date yet. The golf tournament date has been picked. It's August 12th. I am co-chairing with Krista this year. We're a little low on committee members right now, and so she's feeling very stretched. She has a very busy job where she travels a ton, and I believe her last job at AMSA as a senior. And so rather than lose her, I said we should definitely partner together and figure out how to have this move forward. So we're working on that. A save the date has been put out, but we haven't really done anything beyond that, but we will. We hosted a very nice chamber breakfast two weeks ago-ish. Lisa, does that sound right? Maybe two weeks ago, this past Tuesday. We had twenty to twenty-five people from the Marlboro Chamber Come. It was really wonderful. Lisa actually gave opening remarks that I think we were anticipating would last like five minutes, but there were so many questions and so much enthusiasm, it ended up being more like thirty-five or forty minutes and with lots of people coming up afterwards to, to ask more questions. So it was a really, really nice event for us. We talked, I mean, we talked about it going so well that we think we'll do it again. You know, I don't know how often they ask people to do it, but certainly at least once a year, but we would even do it again in the fall. So that's great. The anniversary stuff is rolling out slowly, I think a little more slowly than I had anticipated, but we have done something every month. March was kindness month where we asked people to do twenty acts of kindness and then turn a little form in saying that they had done those, and we'll do a couple prize drawings at the end. Actually, we'll probably do it tomorrow. We might wait until Monday. I have to talk to Kathy about that. We have an alumni versus staff kickball game coming up. We're going to do a drone photo of the whole school. We have a potluck coming up. We're going to open a swag store with the twentieth anniversary logo. And then we'll do something, we won't do anything in July, we'll do something in August, and then we have a couple of ideas for the fall. We've had a little bit of turnover on our committee. We had this wonderful parent participant who was so engaged and so organized, and she really kept us on task, and she's had to actually take a little bit of a step back due to some family stuff that she has going on. She just started a new job. So that's a big loss for us, but I think we're on pretty good track still to, to complete the things that we had been planning. And Arts and Science Night is May 22nd. We'll have some presence there from a development perspective, probably a table. I think we'll also allow the business partners to come and have a presence there, even if they don't want to have a table just to walk through and see that night. It's a really wonderful way to get to know AMSA a little bit better. And the last note that I'm now just remembering what it means, it says vendor outreach. Lisa, Leanna, and I met maybe actually two weeks ago too, and talked about some vendors that we work with that we might target as business partners. So I have a long list. Leanna has shared contact information. Erica shared some contact information too, so we'll start approaching some vendors. Four kicks I know is on everybody's mind. They certainly are in our list of people to include. That's a little more of a, that's probably a little bit of a bigger conversation than some of these smaller vendors that we have, but we're certainly have them on our minds.
Awesome. Thank you very much, Marcy.
I, I have a question.
Oh, you're welcome. Thank you.
I was just wondering, Lisa, was there a common theme in some of the questions that were asked from the chambers?
Yeah, it was really interesting. A lot of them wanted to learn more about the difference in funding, charter funding versus traditional funding, just to make sure, like to ask those questions that there's, you know, misperception, you know, does charter take money from your traditional public schools? And we talked about how the traditional schools are reimbursed the first three years that a student comes at the different rates, not fully reimbursed, but at the different rates. They were also interested in, you know, our inability to access some facilities money through the Mass Building Association. So they, they really did ask some really good questions. And they seem to want to partner with us in, in different ways. We spoke to someone who just opened a local music store and they were wondering if there was any way for them to support, you know, the music interest at AMSA, spoke to someone from the salon downtown who was willing to kind of hold hands with any students that were interested in cosmetology. So like Marcy said, it was, it was a really great experience and I was shocked about the interest. So that was great.
I, I had a question about the alumnus. We have two sitting here, but do, did you, do we have, do we see some traction there? Because I know we, we did not do a good job initially, you know, in tracking people.
Yeah, so I think we're seeing some traction with the alumni. We do have an active alumni board. There's a larger database than I think there has, but in years past, we've actually put together a giving program that we need to email out to that group. The reason we haven't done it yet is because we're actually hoping to meet with the alumni board, because if Lisa and I email it out to all of the alumni, then it's coming from us. I would like it to come with Maddie and Trey's buy-in as, when it's presented to the board. I think that that will be a little more persuasive and powerful for us. And I think we're actually probably going to meet with that group next week. We're playing with some dates right now. And Mary Jo Naraki and Cindy Zomar, who are the two business partners rep, volunteer reps that we have, want to come to that meeting too, because I think they want to talk a little bit to the alumni about some business connections. So I think we have more traction. I don't want to overstate it. We're certainly not doing a ton with them now, but the communication channels seem to be a lot more open. The, and then the ideas, certainly. I, I know that the group, I think what happened partially was they have a really enthusiastic board, but I think that they're all sort of in the sort of, you know, first three stages of their career. So I think time has been a little shorter than some of them anticipated it would be. So some of this volunteer stuff has been a little more slow to roll out than they were anticipating, but I know they want to do a newsletter. I know they want to have more events. I know they want to, you know, keep up with the LinkedIn page a little more frequently, that type of stuff. So all of that is definitely still in the works. And we don't have any reason to believe that any of the enthusiasm from that group has dimmed. I think they're all staying on. I think they're all pretty involved. So that's great. Stefan, I'm sure you know Elwi Pill and Azukar and Maynard, they're, one of their sons is on that alumni board and he's been terrific. So yeah, it's great. And I would just add to that, like my, my little hesitation facial gesture was just that, that I, I do think that the, the board, they're a little overtaxed, so it's, it's been a little bit of a struggle to engage with them, but we are going to try to get senior emails from the seniors. You know, we're going to start that campaign pretty soon. You know, give us your email and we're going to put you in a drawing for something, just so that we don't lose contact with them, because that's the biggest thing is just keeping, keeping them involved. And in the past, I don't, I don't know what AMSA's done to collect their emails, but I like us trying to collect them before they're out the door.
Yeah, and also just as an add-on, I was, I've been chatting with Maddie about potential events for this year and into the fall as well, that we can engage our alumni on a more local level, but also, you know, networking events for young professionals, especially given that AMSA's alumni are very young considering all other schools. So we've had some brainstorming sessions and hopefully we can bring those up in the meeting next week. I plan on attending that as well.
Yeah, it's actually interesting, Evan. So Lisa and I had a quick conversation today about sort of our community of parents and other ways that we get buy-in. And I was saying that I think in a traditional public school, some of the reason there's so, I don't want to say more buy-in, but maybe there's an earlier buy-in from some of the parent communities is because what I see around me in a lot of these towns is a lot of parents who have, let's just say Hudson High School, a lot of parents went to Hudson High School and now their kids go to Hudson High School. So it's sort of like double the enthusiasm. We do not benefit from having second generation people at AMSA yet, right? Our first graduating class is 2011, and I'm not saying none of them have kids. I'm sure some of them do, but I don't, it's not sort of this, you know, they're not really 10th graders, right? And so I think that AMSA will get there from that perspective, but it's just another interesting way to think about, you know, just because of the age that we are, sort of some of the readiness levels that we have are different from what other schools might have for potential.
Yeah. Excellent. Any other questions? Darren, go ahead.
You should, I'm just saying that we should make a note to celebrate the first legacy student when we, when we ultimately get them.
Absolutely. Yeah, there was, when I went to the Back to the Future event my first year, so that's two years ago now, there was a young man there who had a two or three-year-old. I'm guessing I could, if I asked Mark Vidal who that was, he could tell me, and that's certainly somebody that we could, you know, know at least has a child. I don't really know any other reporting mechanism that we have for that type of thing, but I do think some of that will come up in the newsletter, right? So if there is a more robust alumni newsletter, it will be like, oh, births and marriages and that type of announcements probably will play out in that as we go along, so.
I think that's great. That'll be, that'll be a fun celebration.
Very much so.
Excellent. Okay. Go ahead.
If I could interject just for a sec. So I, I had a question, and this is, this is coming from some staff members that have talked to me, staff members in particular who have kids who went to AMSA. And they sort of got in touch with their kids and asked them like, hey, have you heard anything? And for a lot of them, the answer was, no, they hadn't. And I definitely don't think that's for like lack of trying, Marcy, by any stretch, but do we have any numbers of like how far back the alumni were reaching? Though, and while we're talking about collecting email addresses, could we also collect like physical addresses? Because I definitely think mail has a certain force to it that email does not.
That's a great idea.
Yeah, that is a great idea. So Lisa does have the, the alumni database, and I'm actually not sure exactly what's tracked, and at least we should take a look at it tomorrow, just to see what kind of information is there. I, I'm sure it's email addresses, but we should see how many physical addresses we should have. We should see if it has graduation year. We should see if all that information is on there, and then we can start building it from there. So Maddie sent it to us. I think Mark started it, right? Mark Vidal started it. I think he probably sent it to Maddie. Maddie and Trey did a little bit of work on it, then they sent it over to us, not meaning they had stopped working on it. They were sharing it with us. So I, we have not looked at that closely yet, but we can see where we are sort of from a starting point in that way. And we could also share it with the faculty. Marcy, we could also share it with the faculty to make sure that the, those children of faculty are actually on that list, because I'm not sure that they are. Totally agree. It's a great idea.
And I, I bet some faculty keep in touch with some AMSA students that might have contact info.
Yeah, definitely. And, and my impression is that this can work in a sort of clicky way where, you know, you get a lot of people because you hit one sort of person who talked to a lot of people and they send it out. So I think that also comes with the risk of like missing large groups if you didn't happen to hit the one person who could contact all of those people. So I think definitely, like broadest possible net would put that.
Other fundraising alumni questions? Yes, no? All right, seeing none. Thank you so much, Marcy. Faculty representative.
Thank you. Have a, have a great night.
Thanks, Marcy. All right.
I had an easy job tonight because I had two things, and one of them I just said, and the other one we started off the meeting with, which was the, the lack of a definite union. Well, like, obviously, we've agreed to a union contract on behalf of the faculty, but the lack of availability of that finalized document came up with an email to the faculty. And I think a lot of the faculty were kind of caught in this position of like, wait, that doesn't exist yet. Sort of assuming that it had and that they could go and read it, but all we have is kind of the, the memorandum of understanding and the, the difference. I've had a couple people talk to me being like, I would just like to know what my salary should be to make sure that I'm getting paid that money. And that is some math to go back and calculate if you don't have the document, but it sounds like I kind of walked in midway through this conversation at the start of the meeting, but it sounds like that is being prepared.
It, it, I will say that there has been delays and significant delays on both sides. It's, was delayed on the union side for a very long time, and then it's been delayed on our side, and then it's now back. So there's more back and forth than I am happy, like with, as far as it just seems to take, for me, it seems to take too long to review. If anyone has any questions though, Leanna is always happy to sit down with anyone to make sure that everything's accurate. I will poke everybody again to see where we're at.
Yeah, and I definitely, I don't want to paint it like some people think they aren't getting paid the correct amount of money. It's, I think it's definitely just to like, sometimes you go and do that math, but the, if you look, you know, and the last contract is very Google-able. It's like one of the first things that pops up, but the new one has been agreed to for sort of eight months, and people are like, is that never going to happen? So that sort of deal. That's it for me. Does anyone have any questions?
All right. All right, great. Thank you, Greg. Next, parent representative, Dwayne.
Hey, guys. So I only have one thing tonight, and it's, it's coming from the parent community as a whole, not, not a specific parent, but I just, I spoke to the, the PTL members and they were saying that there's, there seems to be less posts of students working in various projects like pics and all that type of stuff, and it's noticeable that Mike Finkel is gone. So the question is like, you know, are we planning on getting someone else in that position to, you know, put, do, take pictures and videos and all that type of stuff again? So it was just, it was just a question about that. And they just said it was noticeable that, you know, he had moved on.
I, I have an update, if I may, Madam Chair, in case, because parents probably don't know this. So I agree. I, I think that there, you know, much less traffic on Instagram and Facebook. But what we're doing is, they're big shoes to fill, and what we've decided to do is instead of hire someone to do communications from like a director level, we decided to take those funds and put it into a teaching position where students will be learning the art of graphic design and social media and taking on that role. So starting next year, students will be taking over the social media accounts. They will be doing the graphic designs to make those posts and responsibly posting. And I will, I can guarantee you that the number of posts will go up significantly, and the fact that they're learning, you know, social media responsibility, I think is a really great thing for kids. So we're going to try that. We'll see how it goes. And, you know, I, I'm, I've got high hopes for it though.
And, and Lisa, they are not concerned about any inappropriate use when students have access to these accounts. We, we have safeguards from the security.
I mean, as you know, especially being a techie, nothing is foolproof, right? But the, the individual that we hired to oversee this class currently works at AMSA is incredibly responsible, and it was a class where I was in Rantham, and we fortunately never had any inappropriate posts because the teacher approved them first, and the social media was incredibly active. All the announcements were done through social media. The kids' photos were done through social media. It will look a little different. I don't think it'll be as much straight kid pics. But we do have more and more families that opt out of that media situation, which makes taking pictures of students very, very difficult, because unless you know all nine sixty-six, you don't really know when you snap a picture of a child whose parent has said, look, I don't want my child's picture on the internet. So there will be a different look. um, there will be a different look, but I do think it'll be very successful.
So is this, I'll go for it.
Oh, no, I was gonna say one last note. They, they did mention that, um, Lisa, you were doing a great job with the weekly announcements, but you can be everywhere. So.
I, I appreciate the props.
Uh, I was just gonna add on. So have we vetted this individual for essentially like qualifications of being able to teach etiquette and so on for these social media accounts? Because I do believe that is very important here.
Yeah. I mean, she has a background in graphic design. So obviously publishing, graphic design, marketing, um, we, Mike and I both felt very comfortable with the selection.
Okay. Yeah. Just because that, as soon as, you know, the conversation came up of, you know, misuse and everything. Ethics and morals are a huge piece of this, especially when you have children involved. So maybe that being a huge part of the class to start off with, just to make sure everybody's on the same page. And like Stefan said, with the safeguards in place, that's huge. So.
She's working, she, yeah, she's going to submit her curriculum. Um, she will fall under the art department chair. However, I'm very confident and hopeful that there will be collaboration with the computer science department chair, um, and to overlook that, to, to review that curriculum along with Mike. And I'm very confident that that group of professionals can, you know, assess whether or not this adequate. Our, our kids get a lot of, um, ethics in some of the other CS classes as well.
Okay. And just as, because it came up immediately right after. So from a financial perspective, we're taking the, the numbers from Mike Finkel's position and we're, and then giving it to the existing teacher for the curriculum? Are we?
No, no, this is, this is a new hire. So it's a new position. And the net savings is, I mean, we did have to invest in some equipment, but, uh, the salary savings, uh, it's between 20 and 30,000 a year to do it this way. Instead of hiring a communications director.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Seeing none. Lisa, executive director report.
Okay. I'm going to try to make up a little time here with just, um, first asking if there are any questions on just the goals update. I, I just threw up a PDF for the board there to show you where I, you know, was in, progress towards achieving my goals. Last year I presented at the strategic planning meeting, but we really did a great job focusing on strategic planning this year instead. So if there's questions on that, I'll take that. If not, I'll share my screen and get going with the, the ED report presentation.
Does anybody have questions on the ED goals update?
Okay. I'm going to work to share that screen. Uh, let's see.
Laura, I'm sorry. I didn't come off mute when I thought I did. Um, and I don't, we don't necessarily need to talk about it now, but I had the impression that that, that the, the capital plan was still, I mean, I know that there's like, it's a living document, but I thought it was still a work in progress. Is it?
So it, the, we just, it's complete with regard to its structure. We recently added the IT, all the IT needs because that was really the only element that was missing. And we just have to finalize that. Leon and I are meeting tomorrow with Erica to just go over it. But if you look at it, it has all of our, um, capital IT, uh, listed by room. And when we will be refreshing all of those, when we will refresh staff. And so we, we, we will take another pass at it with Erica tomorrow. And, um, and then, then I would say it's complete as a, as a living, breathing document.
Awesome. I, good for you.
Thank you. I'm struggling sharing and I don't. It won't, let me see.
I know that everybody should be able to present.
I can share Sarah. It's a matter of it was not allowing me to shake. Do you see the ED report?
I do see it.
Okay. It was not switching screens on me. So, but.
Better you than me. Yes.
Uh, view slideshow. Here we go. All right. So the first slide, just wanted to share a little update with you. Uh, 40 AMSA students participated in the third annual career expo. Uh, this is a really great time because it is the work of the outreach director, the principals, um, from AMSA, Westboro High School, Hudson High School, Algonquin High School, Marlboro High School, Assabette. Um, it's done with MEDC and also MRCC. And the, we sent 40 kids. It was a great, great day. Um, and again, a lot of collaboration. So a lot of dissemination, Sarah. All right. This report is, um, the first thing that we need to take a look at is the attrition and waitlist. So, um, this is our attrition chart. Um, these are students that have left AMSA and where they went. And the chart breaks it down by grade level for you here. Um, with 19 students going back to public schools, six going to Assabette, one homeschool, one moved in the state and felt the distance was too great to travel and two moved out of state.
Lisa, was the pattern we talked about the last time continued where the, I think I asked you the last time we looked at this data about the 19 that returned to public and it was a mix of, um, sports. I forget what all the reasons were. There was like three or four reasons. There wasn't like a common, uh, uh, reason that folks were returning to public. Did that?
Yeah. No, like, I mean. Yeah. So our, our worries of common threads would be if there was a large number of students, let's say, uh, receiving services either through 504 IEPs. That would be a large worry for us. Most of the times when they return to public school, it's just, they'll tell us fit. I liked it better, you know, at my homeschool. So friends, you know, feeling like they fit in. Um, it wasn't much different than last year's data because I still have last year's presentation. Um, and this slide shows, you know, there was one more student that withdrew this year than last year when I presented this. Um, less students this time with IEPs. And I think the 504s might've been the same. I don't, I don't recall that, but we, with regards to students requiring services, only three students were needing accommodations through 504 left. We did not lose any students who received services who are on IEPs. Um, and the bottom is the town breakdown, um, of where, you know, they went back. What towns students left from? All right. So just, yeah.
Is that, that, uh, time period, is that this school year compared to last, a year ago or what?
Yeah. So this would be from, um, from September up until now. Does that make sense?
So like September, would it, like if somebody decided last June that they weren't coming back for the fall, they would be in this count or they would not?
If they were above sixth grade, they would be in this count. Not, well, it, yeah, it would be July 1. If they would, if they withdrew at the end of the year, they would be in this count and they would be in this count as seventh graders. So where it says seven over here, we had nine withdrawals and that could have happened anytime at the, from the end of the school year up until now.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Oops. Wrong way. All right. Um, so the next thing is to talk a little bit about our lottery. Um, and I just have a quick explanation of net school spending on here because that's always something that the public asks questions about and how does a district become a skip over district? So last year, uh, when, and I'm talking, um, so enrolling for this current school year, we know that Marlboro was at their net school spending cap. And therefore we had a lot of students join us from Hudson. This year, and we had, so we skipped over Marlboro last year. This year Hudson was at cap and so we were required to skip over Hudson. Siblings, siblings get to come. And if a sibling pushes a district over their spending cap, the state pays for the sibling. But we had to skip over all other Hudson students for, to start coming in in September. Um, wow. Can you see that? Or you're, you're just over it? So can you see the numbers were afterward? It says seats offered?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. I just can't. Um, so, um, these are our lottery results. Um, we had 56 siblings. And let me see if I can minimize this to see it. So, uh, for grade six, we had 97 Marlboro students, five Maynard, 12 Clinton and 18 Hudson. Those are all siblings. And then we had five other and the other would also be siblings. Okay. Grade seven, we did not admit any students this year, uh, yet. Um, we do have one sibling on the waitlist. So if we have any withdrawals, um, in sixth grade, in our current sixth grade, we will hit the waitlist, starting with the one sibling that's on the waitlist. Um, the same thing with grade eight. We were not, uh, able to open any seats in grade eight. But if any grade seven, current grade seven students leave from now, um, till before September, we'll start with the one sibling on the waitlist and then, you know, obviously move down the waitlist if we have to. Grade nine, we made three offers, uh, two students from Maynard and one from Marlboro. They were both siblings. And we still have three siblings on the waitlist for grade nine. Uh, so our grade six waitlist is down, uh, it's only down about three to five students. And so the ups and the downs are just to show you that it went up and down a little bit, but it really is under 10 students each way. Um, grade seven waitlist is up. Um, grade waitlists remain the same and the grade nine waitlist is up. All right. Before we go to the tuition primer, I'm going to take any questions. I might've lost you all.
No, you did a good job explaining all the numbers.
Okay. Any questions on that? All right. It's so weird because I can't see you and show this at the same time. So I apologize. And I do have a short tuition primer, um, little movie there, but, uh, in light of time, I'm going to make sure that you all get that and we will post it so that if parents want to watch it, they can. But I asked Bella to run us through this because she lives and breathes it. And I think she gives a real good explanation. And our tuition, what we're collecting for tuition next year is taking a dip because as I said, um, previously Marlboro was at cap, but now Hudson's at cap and that makes a significant difference. So Bella, if you want to come off mute, I'll give you the first slide.
Okay. Uh, you're not sharing your slides anymore.
Oh, okay. Let me do that again. Here we go. Am I there?
No.
Lord, help me.
See if I can do it.
Share. Here we go.
Okay.
All right. There we go.
Yep. Okay. So I, I don't eat and breathe this, but, um, because there's a lot of stuff I don't know. Uh, but I do know that the state publishes a lot of information on, on their website, uh, a lot of data. And, um, so I started pulling a spreadsheet together a few years ago. Um, and so they, and they provide quarterly, quarterly reports for every single charter school. Um, and so, and so what we see here is enrollment back to 2018. And, um, Q4 is really, that's the final number for that year. So we're currently, um, you know, the latest information we've, we have is Q2 2025. Um, but Q4 2025, when that gets published, that's going to be the final number for this current year. And so enrollment generally doesn't change, but sometimes other things change. So even though we're in the year, we really don't know what our final tuition number is for even this year that we're in. So it's always like an estimation, a projection even in the current year. So I guess just everyone keep that in mind. And that, you know, that was a surprise to me because, you know, you want to know how much tuition you're getting upfront for that year, but you, you just, you know, there, and it is, you know, I think Leona can, she's been here for a while. So I, I believe there were some surprises in the past.
Uh, for instance, in, for that situation. So we just went through the attrition, uh, that happened at AMSA. If, let's say, six Maynard kids leave and we backfill with Marlboro kids, that significantly impacts the tuition. And you'll see that when Bella runs through the next couple of slides around tuition from the sending towns. And that's why we don't know what our finances are completely until the end of the year, what she was just explaining. So we'll go to the next.
So before we do that, so I, I, if you can, the green is, uh, what we think the enrollment by town will be for next year. And you, the all other towns category is literally a summation of all other towns. But if you really wanted to see all the towns and who's coming from what town, we, we have that information. Um, and so you can see that for this year, we have, um, uh, and then if you see the two columns to the left of the green, the, the Q2 2025, that's the information released from the state. And what we're going to project for this year is based on what we just got from the state. Um, those numbers could change a little bit, but you know, this is our best information. So you can see that we have 502 kids from Marlboro, 230 from Hudson, 60 from Maynard, 84 from Clinton. But if you look at the green, um, it's different. And the reason why is we subtracted all the 12th graders and added all the incoming sixth graders. And so now we have more Marlboro students. Um, and, um, you know, less of the other towns. Okay. So you can go to the next slide. Okay. So our tuition, so our, the money that we get every year, about 90% of our money comes from the state in tuition dollars. And so, and so that's what we're going to go over, about 90% of our revenue. And you can see like, uh, and then that tuition is split into three different rates. There's this thing called the foundation rate, uh, the above foundation rate, and then the facilities rate. And the foundation rate, um, you know, and I, I'm again, I'm not an expert, but this is what I believe is the minimum amount that the state requires each town to spend for their student. And then the above foundation rate is the, the town can spend more than, uh, that minimum amount. Um, and the facilities rate is again, something we get from the state and that is, uh, for facilities expenditures. So, um, you can see in Marlboro, for example, for this year, we're, um, predicted to get $13,900 per Marlboro student. Um, and then, you know, 12, 865 for Hudson, et cetera. Um, and so what we're, based on looking at past history and also information from the state, the state signals to, you know, like some assumptions that you might want to make, we're going to take those rates um, and increase each of one of those 3%. So that's what's highlighted in green. So you can see the 14,300. So you can see the fourteen thousand three hundred and seventeen, um, for Marlboro, which is actually, you know, higher than Hudson and Maynard for that foundation rate. Um, so the total, um, tu- tuition for just the foundation rate is thirteen million four sixty. Um, and this current year, we're gonna get thirteen million fifty, we hope. Um, okay, so you can go to the next slide. So the next slide is the above foundation rate. Again, this is the amount that the town spends over and beyond the foundation rate. And I guess I want everyone to look at Marlboro. And you can see that there's some significant fluctuations, but, but that, um, above foundation rate is coming down. And so you see, um, in Q four twenty twenty three, it was one thousand eight hundred and forty seven. Then it was seven hundred and thirty six. Um, the latest report shows that for this year, it's gonna be eight hundred and sixty six. And you can see this number is much lower than student, than the other towns. And so as we have more Marlboro students and less of the other towns, our overall tuition is gonna, is gonna come down. And so you can see that, um, we're making, the assumptions we're making for next year, I don't think are conservative, we, because we don't really know how much the town is gonna spend next year. It's, it's a, it's almost, it's a big guess. So we're assuming that for Marlboro, it's gonna, it's gonna hold steady at eight sixty six. Hudson, we're also assuming it's gonna hold, um, steady at seven thousand eighty seven, just because I think Lisa, you had heard something about, um, they're voting for a town override. Uh, so, um, you know, Maynard, we decided to increase their rate three percent. So from seven thousand fifty three to seven thousand two hundred and sixty five. Um, Clinton, we're holding steady. Um, and then we did increase all other towns three percent. So at the end of the day, um, what we're getting, what we're projecting for above foundation rates is actually less next year on average than this year because we have more Marlboro students in that mix. Any questions? Okay. So you can go to the next slide. So the facilities rate, which is, um, that first box, you can see that back in twenty eighteen, we would receive eight hundred and seventy one dollars per student. And now if you, um, go all the way to the far right, we're getting one thousand one hundred and eighty eight dollars per student. Uh, they, the state has, I think, signaled that that's not gonna change for next year. So, um, you know, that's what we're making, we're assuming this. I don't think it's a big assumption, I think that's the number. So when you add up the facilities rate, the above facilities rate and the facility, and the, I'm sorry, foundation rate, above foundation rate, and facilities rate, and, um, you, uh, you know, apply the student enrollment to it, at the end of the day, we're projecting that, you know, we will get for tuition seventeen million five hundred and forty nine thousand. Um, this past year, we're getting, we're projecting seventeen million two fifty. And you can see, uh, as a per student increase, it's only a one point seven percent increase compared to this year. And the reason why that rate of increase is lower is because we're getting, we're having more Marlboro students and that above foundation rate for Marlboro is really low. Um, and then down on the bottom, it just kind of shows you of our tuition, about seventeen percent of our tuition comes from above foundation rates, seventy seven percent or, you know, seventy five percent foundation, and then between six and seven percent for facilities.
Any questions on this?
Really insightful overview. That's, that's great for newcomer like me.
Yeah, and I, you know, I, this is a really difficult task that the finance committee does. And I, I commend them, I think they do it really well. Cause it really is a gamble, you know? Um, w- we're aware that, you know, Hudson is trying to go for an override. If they don't get that override, they don't have to spend above their foundation rate, and they'll have to cut. It, so what they're saying is if we don't get the override, we're gonna have to cut some things. If we cut some things, that'll bring their above foundation rate down, thereby also bringing tuition down. So, um, this team has been very conservative in the past in order to get AMSA into the position to buy its buildings and build that new building. And I think that's key to know. It's not just about the new building. It's also the fact that they made, you know, a, a purchase of the buildings that, well, you all made a purchase of the buildings that AMSA has. And, you know, financially, that was a really smart move, but it also ties up money, um, more than just renting. But, you know, there really wasn't much of an option at that point. Um, so I, I really do think that, you know, that conservative planning in the past helped AMSA get where it's at. Um, but this is not, I don't believe this is an overly conservative budget where we're going to see a ton of surplus at the end of twenty twenty six. Um, I'd love to be wrong, but, yeah. All right. See what I have next for you. Um, I just want to share with the board because this is very, very important. And also anybody that's gonna watch the recording or watching now. There's legislation pending that may impact charter education as a whole in Massachusetts. And it's important for us to be aware of it. And also what, uh, AMSA's position is and, you know, what we're gonna try to do to rally the troops. So, um, currently there are three bills pending, and this slide here does not, um, really, you know, the titles are very vague, and so we'll go through them. But I will say, I will send this presentation out in my newsletter on Sunday. Um, so everyone will get it. And, um, Evan, I will include you since you don't get the newsletters. And Jim, you too, um, since you don't get the newsletter. So that if you wanted to monitor these bills, you click this link and monitor them there. Um, the first one on there, um, what it does, this, this bill, if this bill passes, this will significantly hurt AMSA, could potentially cut tuition by anywhere from one half to cutting it by seventy five percent. The intent of these bills are to close charters. These bills are strongly backed by the MTA. Um, what it does is it removes any out of district special education costs from the charter school tuition calculation. So it will drop their foundation rates and their above foundation rates significantly. And then our tuition would be calculated on that. You know, what some folks don't know is that there is a program called Massachusetts Circuit Breaker. And it doesn't pay for all of the high cost for special education. It should, but it doesn't. But districts do get reimbursed for a portion of those high cost out of district tuitioned students. So, you know, our legislators should look to fully fund circuit breaker rather than change charter tuition and end up damaging charter education in Massachusetts. And that's gonna be one of our messages that we need to kind of advocate for. Um, this is, I, I got ahead of myself, so this is my slide on the fix. Um, the next one is a bill that really promotes misinformation around charter education. Um, and this breaks it down. So it's, you know, basically saying that we need to have a centralized waitlist management system because we don't trust charters to manage their waitlist. Um, we have to submit our waitlist, we have to submit attrition. We submit all of that to DESI. We don't have somebody else managing the waitlist, but we, we have the report, kids in, kids out. Kids are all tracked by their state assigned number. Um, so there's a lot of transparency in that if folks want it. Um, they are moved, this bill moves for a single statewide online application system. Uh, the bill, it says that DESI will conduct regular audits. Well, they do. We go through a charter renewal process. Um, we have an accountability plan we submit every year. We do a lot of that. Uh, charters must develop and share best practices. We try. That's the dissemination that we're always, you know, mentioning to Sarah. Hey Sarah, that's dissemination. Hey Sarah, that's dissemination. We will share our practices with anyone that's interested. Today, Mike Naraki had arranged from a number of professionals from Libertas Charter to come and observe our AP courses. And Mike, if you're on there and you want to, on Mike for a second, just to share with the board and the community what they said about our AP classes, that'd be great. Maybe he had to drop off. Um, so what Mike told me, uh, near the end of the day was they, they brought a consultant with them. And the consultant sat down with Mike and, uh, the professionals from Libertas and said, this is the best run program they've ever seen. So kudos to all the teachers that got visited today. Um, this is the best run program that they've ever seen. Um, corrective action for failing schools. Uh, schools must submit state approved improvement plans. Well, when you go for your charter renewal, if you're a failing school, your charter is either not renewed or it's renewed with conditions. And the conditions are your improvement plan to be able to be renewed fully. So all of these things here, charters do. So whoever wrote this bill and drafted this bill, they clearly don't know the level of accountability that, um, charters are held to. Um, and the interesting one for me was the last one because we're always saying, we need more professionals on our board. This bill moves that at least fifty percent of the board must be parents of current, current students, uh, within five years of the school's founding. So i- it's just interesting. Um, I don't think this bill would hurt AMSA, even though it's meant to be anti-charter because we're really confident that we do all these things. Um, the next and final bill will change that net school spending cap from nine percent down to seven percent. So that will destroy charters that don't have waitlists, for sure. It will close their doors. Um, AMSA does have a healthy waitlist, and we do have a healthy waitlist from many towns. Um, so I don't know the full impact of what this will have, but it's not good for Massachusetts charter education. Because if towns' net school spending cap is at seven percent and most towns become skip over districts, we're all gonna be fighting from kids who, fighting for kids who live far away from where we're located. So I thought it was important just to give you that primer. And, um, I think that's the end, so I'll stop sharing. The next steps, um, you will see in my Sunday email, um, just an introduction of what AMSA will, is planning on doing with regards to advocacy. We're going to try to get a phone writing, um, uh, campaign going. Marcy's working on it with me so that we can try to get, the Charter Association would like to see us get two hundred and fifty emails or phone calls to the governor's office between the thirty first of March and April eleventh. We are gonna try to double that. We want at least five hundred families from AMSA and from our waitlist to send emails. And we're gonna help craft those emails about the points that are relevant because the governor is about to appoint two individuals to the Board of Education. The Board of Education is the board that votes for charter renewals and charter expansions. The two members that are leaving are charter friendly. And our concern is that she will appoint anti-charter members to this board. And they will then move in the direction to support legislation like this and to squash any further requests for expansion that charters may have. So we're on top of it. Um, this may look new, um, with regards to the ED role that you are, you know, maybe used to and maybe that our staffs used to. But this is the kind of work that I've been doing in order to make sure that AMSA is viable in the future. My job's not about today. My job, I see my job is about making sure that AMSA is viable for, for a long time. Questions?
I really appreciate that, Lisa. I think the, the legislation piece, the governance piece at the state level is always such a tricky, complicated situation, right, for charter schools. And not everybody understands, right? We understand the benefits that our kids and our families get from, you know, being able to be a part of AMSA. Um, but it is, it's hard to kind of wrap your head around, like, why wouldn't somebody support a place as awesome as AMSA and all the other charter schools that are out there? Um, so I think it's a good education. I think it's something that especially us as board members, we need to stay on top of and just be constantly educating ourselves on what's changing, who's, who's doing what. And it is that networking, I mean, you're right, like the, that role of networking and really continuing to increase awareness and, and sort of raise, raise us on everyone's radar.
And you know, my, we have excellent leaders here at AMSA, you know? Uh, Mike, Amanda, Anthony, James, they've got the building and the school level stuff. You know, we have to do beyond that now. And, um, and I, I just believe in choice for kids, right? I, I am not anti-traditional district, um, at all, came from one for a long time. I believe that kids need to find the right place for each kid. And that is what, you know, I think AMSA is all about and what we want to fight for. The right place for every kid. Well, thank you, guys. Um, if you have any questions that pop up later, just let me know.
All right.
I, I was just going to add pretty quick. I would love to get like twice a year, maybe an update about these type of policy things. Uh, that, that was really insightful and that will help us also determine how we can do the networking in the lobby. Because that's really hard for me. I'm not in the industry. I'd like, just how do we get started with this? And I know we have talked about this on and off before.
Can do, I can make it part of my ED report, um, to, uh, brief you on the legislation if it's made any movement. Right now, all three bills are in the Education Committee.
Great. Thank you, Lisa. All right, we are moving on to Chair Businesses next. So, um, I wanted to just circle back, oh god, I hate using jargon. But I'm gonna circle back to our strategic planning sessions. Um, those two Saturday meetings that we had. Again, thank you to everybody, the families who participated, the students, the faculty members, um, and all of you who gave up two Saturdays back to back to really dig in to some important things regarding what, what our next steps are here at AMSA. Um, so our next step, so we don't lose sight of all the work that we did do, um, those two weekends. We are going to do, um, some strategic plan follow up. So at our next board meeting, which is on May first, um, we're gonna have a little bit of a working session when it comes to action items. Um, what I would ask is everybody who is in possession of, I don't know if you can see it, but our, our action planning docs that we have from that, if you want to go ahead and send those to me, I will compile everything and get a packet out to every board member. Um, if you can get those to me before April vacation, so in the next two, three weeks, um, so I can put them all together and get them to everybody at least a week ahead of our board meeting, that would be great. Um, and then we'll spend some time really honing in and nailing down our next action steps from those documents. Um, I think in general, I do want to just share that, you know, this is a big process, this is more than just these two Saturdays. Um, and we're gonna be taking on, well, in general, is gonna be taking on the strategic planning process, um, and engaging stakeholders in the work. And I think that's the important piece. It's not just the board making strategic planning decisions in isolation. It's not just the administration doing it. Um, we had stakeholders at the table for the first time, at least uh, in my experience as a board member, we had panels, and that was the, the best part, honestly, of those two weekends was having the the best part, honestly, of those two weekends was having the input of our key stakeholders. And so we want to do more of that. So that's going to be, you know, happening, coming down the road. And so if folks have questions, don't hesitate to reach out. But I just wanted to sort of update and say, this isn't falling by the wayside. This isn't just another like, oh, let's talk about it and then forget about it. We're actually going to use some of our already existing board meeting time for that. Any questions on that particular topic? Or anything? I forgot. No. Okay, great. Just one quick follow up. Lisa had reached out to everybody about the mayor's charity event coming up on April twelfth. So if you would like to come and represent Amsa at that event, please get back to Lisa, have a conversation with her, and we'll get that squared away. And I think that's it for Chair Business. So we will move on to Committee Reports Development. Evan.
Hello. Already talked a little bit about alumni with with Marcy and her update and too much to add on. We're meeting next week and doing a bit of market research, as she had mentioned, into existing vendors. But also I'm doing a bit more research into companies, so like tech companies or bio. Wow. Getting the word. Bio startups and so on and so forth, to see if there's any opportunities to leverage our students and the connections there, reaching out to some alumni in their current places of work to essentially plant some seeds of Amsa students and their impact in the professional world. So more to come on that, hopefully, as we bring that up with the Alumni Association as well. So events will be planned with that ideally. But other than that, that's the gist of it for this month.
Awesome. Thank you, Evan. Questions for Evan?
Yes, questions?
Okay, finance, Bella.
We have just, we've reviewed our budget for next year, like our first pass. And we're actually refined our budget based on the the new enrollment numbers that you just, we just showed you in our tuition. So we're coming back to look at the budget again and hopefully bring it to the board at the next board meeting.
Awesome. Thank you. Any questions for Bella? On finance? No. Okay, governance, Darren.
Good evening. So the Governance Committee met the week following this second round of strategic planning retreating. And I think we recommitted to the work of the committee, which is, you know, to support a high functioning board. That takes a couple of forms. One is related to membership. You know, we're pretty close to our minimum, recognize the need to expand, size the board and want to do that in a way that, you know, adds to the diversity of skills that we have amongst the group. And so we've gotten a few referrals for candidate board members. We're working on, you know, the board recruitment process and you know, kind of refining that and solidifying it. So hopefully, more to come on that soon. You should soon expect to get a request for you to fill out a skills survey, which is sort of like skills and experience. So we want to take stock of, you know, the talents that we already have amongst the existing board members. And then think about where we think we might have some gaps and prioritize new prospects based on, you know, the needs that we need to fill amongst the board. So when you get that request, please respond. So that's membership. Second area is how we organize ourselves, which we mentioned before, we're going to undertake review of the bylaws, particularly now that we're past the strategic planning session. We have a little bit better idea of you know, what it is that we're trying to do and get to. And we'll be taking a look at, you know, it's time for a comprehensive bylaws review and we'll we'll undertake that work. And then third is this continuing education and training of board members. So we're all knowledgeable about the things that we need, we need to know. That doesn't necessarily mean the Governance Committee is going to do the training because we're probably not the subject matter experts on the areas in which the training needs to happen. But, you know, for example, things like, you know, if people feel like they need to understand charter school finance, then the kind of presentation that we just heard, you know, would be appropriate to that. And so if you have any ideas or requests for high priority training areas, please send them along to me and we'll we'll prioritize those. Otherwise, you know, you'll hear what we think you need to know. And hopefully do that in a cadence where it's kind of recurring. I asked more if we could have a sort of a standing spot on the agenda for a little, you know, quick learning bite every now and then. And so we're looking to roll out something like that. I'd be happy to take any questions if there are any.
Okay, great.
Okay, thanks.
Seeing none. Education, Stefan. Are you back on yet?
Yes, yes. We had our meeting. We finalized the timeline for the student and the teacher survey that we will conduct in April and beginning of May. And we'll discuss in committee the results in our May and June meetings. And and then we'll provide the summaries to the board. And also we started with my presentation and Greg's presentation on on the Amsa curriculum and then how we can make decisions or like oversights around that. So that's also ongoing because we actually had a very healthy discussion there and didn't go through much of Greg's materials, which is absolutely great. And I also see CPAC getting involved in the Education Committee, at least not as members yet, but at least listening in. And I hope they will continue to participate because it's great to have their voices. So that's it for me.
Great, thank you. Questions for Stefan? All right, excellent. Reviewing action items. So items from previous meetings. We can check some of these off the list. They're marked as completed, reviewing the data provided by Lisa, working on the strategic planning agenda. We have the strategic planning meetings, so that's completed. Reviewing the bylaws and policies, that's ongoing, as Darren noted, and renewal status renewed without conditions complete. Questions, comments? For new action items, Sarah, I think Darren just mentioned maybe adding a standing board education piece to our agendas on a regular basis.
The other two was that you wanted members to send in their planning documents before April vacation and that you were going to put something together and send that out.
Yes. And also, could you, could we put in a, just so we don't lose sight of it, even if there's nothing to update on, but sort of a strategic planning process update for each agenda?
Okay, make that an item.
Yeah.
Standing. Just like a board education, that's what that was for, right?
Yeah.
On the agenda?
Yes. So we'll have those two standing items. Keeps it front and center so we don't forget. Are there any other items to add? Any new action items? All right, great. Excuse me. So I will entertain a motion to go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to the collective bargaining or litigation as discussion in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position, litigating position of the public body. We will not reconvene in open session, and we will also invite Lisa Mobley, Mike Naraki, and Leanna is coming as well.
And Erica Petrowski.
And Erica. Okay, great.
Motion to go into executive session.
Do we have the motions?
Dwayne first, and do we have a second?
Go ahead, Greg.
Greg?
I'm always over someone, yeah.
Okay. Ocon, Bella?
Yes.
Darren?
Yes.
Dwayne?
Yes.
Evan?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mara?
Yes.
And Stefan?
Yes.
Excellent. So we are adjourned out of a regular session at seven twenty three. And we'll give everybody five minutes to get over to the other link. And everybody has the link? Yes?
Yeah. Hey, Greg, thanks.
Yes. Yeah, have a good night, everyone.
Thanks, Greg.
Thanks.
Okay. Stop recording.